Good evening and welcome to your City Commission study session. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Including me. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 PM and midnight, and they are available on YouTube for your viewing pleasure. Tonight, we have a study session and we're going to do CIP. So I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I am in turn here briefly going to turn it over to Roberta to give a quick presentation on what this CIP looks like over the next five years. But first, you're going to get my little spiel. So as you'll see up there on the screen, this probably should look familiar to you all. This is from our goal-setting session from a couple of months ago. I was not just giving you lip service when I said that our budget wanted to reflect, when I wanted our budget to reflect these priorities. We're just talking about CIP tonight, so not all of your priorities will apply necessarily. But I definitely want you to look at those top three there. Take an honest approach to revenue generation in the city, evaluate the future of solid waste service, and evaluate the future of wastewater services. All three of those priorities are going to come into play here tonight and as we move on through the CIP project and the whole budgeting process as well. In particular, solid waste and wastewater. The CIP as it stands now is probably, well, it is not reflective of the final product in that we have not decided as a group on how to proceed with that. So that will change dramatically over the next five to six months based on the conversations we have. Now, I do understand that you are waiting on some final numbers from us that we are working on for solid waste. So it is unfair of me to sit here and say, "You guys haven't made a decision, and we haven't given you the information you need to make that decision." I recognize that. Just pointing out that as the CIP unfolds for a couple of those priorities, that'll look very different over the course of the year. And now, other than that, I will turn it over to Roberta. She and I are going to kind of tag-team going through the projects tonight. Once Roberta's done, I will circle back around and kind of talk about the major kind of elephants in the room, so to speak, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, so I'm going to present a short slideshow on a revenue overview and how it impacts the CIP budget. So the first 20 pages of your CIP budget book is the summary of the proposed schedule expenditures by fund. And each fund has a specific source of revenue. The Capital Projects Fund is sales tax. 25% of all the city's sales tax we collect goes into CIP Sales Tax Fund, and 85% of the county sales and use tax we collect goes into the County White Sales Tax Fund. The Streets Capital Project Fund is also funded by sales tax, and it also receives about $500,000 a year in federal fund exchange reimbursements. We have the Grant Matching Capital Project Fund that was established to segregate out projects that have been or may be awarded a grant that covers a portion of the project costs. The primary revenue sources, hopefully, are federal grants and state grants, and then there's a matching component that would come from the relevant fund. The Sewer Fund projects are funded by fees for service because it's a proprietary fund, and the same is true of the Refuge Fund. And all of the sewer water capital projects are funded by the Stormwater Impact Fee. So we collect all this money in the CIP Sales Tax Funds, but before we spend a single dollar on a capital improvement project, money is transferred out of those sales tax funds for debt service. So we have three projects that were funded by debt service that are CIP projects. That's the Thornton Street Project, the Business and Technology Park, and the Aerial Ladder. And then the Recreation Fund is going to receive about $1.8 million in sales tax funds this year and about $1.7 million in 2026. And then we have TIF projects that get a little bit of sales tax, and it looks likely to be about $64,000 in 2026. So the question is, that I have, is, is what is the allocation of sales tax that's collected within these sales tax funds? And in 2025, 30% of the sales tax we collected was transferred to the Recreation Fund, 17% was transferred to the Debt Service Fund, and only 53% of the sales tax dollars we collected were actually available for CIP projects. So the question is, can we increase the funds available for CIP projects? Because you'll see when we go through this that, you know, we had to unschedule a lot of stuff, right? So of the three categories of expenditures, the first one was debt payments, and those debt payments are fixed. One will be paid off in 2031, and two will be paid off in 2036. And because of this, we cannot reallocate any sales tax dollars from debt service to CIP projects until 2032. The Revenue Fund, or the Recreation Fund, has three primary revenue sources. And in 2025, they were ad valorem tax, which was 15% of the Recreation Fund's budget, fees for service and other taxes, and that was about 17%, and then sales tax, which comprised of 68% of the Recreation Fund's budget. So if we could increase the amount of ad valorem tax allocated to the Recreation Fund, shift it from something to the Recreation Fund, the amount of sales tax needed to support the Recreation Fund would decrease. And then the TIF transfers must be made based on contracts with the TIF developers, and therefore, they cannot be reduced. They are what they are. So as I stated on the previous slide, 15% of the Recreation Fund's budget is supported by ad valorem tax. If we can increase the amount of ad valorem tax allocated to the Recreation Fund, it will decrease the fund's dependence on sales tax. That's going to be possible because due to the decision to no longer issue debt for the pavement management program, debt service starts to decline in 2026. This is even though we spent $5 million for the fire station. Decreasing the mill levy required to support debt service. The proposed 2026-2030 CIP budget is predicated on shifting the decrease in debt service mill levy to the Recreation Fund so that each year, a greater percent of the Recreation Fund budget is covered by ad valorem tax, and a smaller percent is dependent on sales tax. So this is a quick overview of what the 2025 mills were. This is just the city's portion. It does not include the library. And you can see the Recreation Fund had 1.617 mills or $510,000 of a $2.1 million budget. So in 2026, the Debt Service Fund will only require $2.1 million. In '25, it required $2.2 million. And assuming assessed values increase by 4%, that will lower the required mill by almost half a mill to 6.436 mills. And the proposed 2026 CIP budget transfers those mills to the Recreation Fund. And the budget also proposes a .31 mill increase for the Recreation Fund for a total increase of .834 mills, increasing the mill levy for the Recreation Fund from 1.6 to 2.5 in 2026. So I did an 11-year look forward that shifts the mill levy from the Debt Service Fund to the Recreation Fund as the debt is paid off. So the assumptions that are made in this presentation is that we're going to shift that money to the Recreation Fund. Assessed values in 2025 will increase by 4%. The 2022 to 2036 assessed value will increase at an average rate of 3% per year. That's just an assumption. And then, as I said before, that the mill levy that supports the Recreation Fund will increase by eight tenths of a mill, and the 2027 through 2036 mill levies will remain flat. So that was a good time to talk about where, what is our debt position right now. So at the end of 2025, we will have $18.6 million of outstanding debt in the governmental funds. This does not include debt in the Sewer Fund and the Stormwater Capital Project Fund because that debt's paid off with the fees for service and the Stormwater Impact Fee. 2025 debt service is $3.8 million. Some of that's coming from the ad valorem tax, and some of that's coming from sales tax. If we do not issue any more debt, all debt will be retired by the end of 2036. If we increase the mills for the Recreation Fund as the mills needed for the debt fund decrease, the Recreation Fund will no longer require sales tax support in 2034. This will free up $2.2 million compared to 2025 for CIP projects. And then, so you see the ad valorem tax in 2025 covered $2.2 million in the debt service, and sales tax covered the remaining 1.6, and that debt service is decreasing. So the following tabs will show this information in graph form. So in this graph, what you're seeing on the far left is the 2025 allocation of the mills. The General Fund taking up the biggest portion of it. This orange section is the mills, the mill levy for the Debt Service Fund. The little red line is pension funds, and then the orange at the top is the Recreation Fund. As we shift the pension fund, or the Debt Service Fund mill to the Recreation Fund, the line stays flat, and you can see how the debt service doesn't require any more mill levy. This slide does assume a mill increase in the General Fund, though that number will probably change as we work on the 2026 budget. I just didn't want to not show anything because there might be something. So this slide shows the exact same thing, but instead of mills, it's the dollars ad valorem tax collected. We are assuming that 3% a year increase. And you can see in 2036, the ad valorem tax will only be used for two things: the General Fund and the Recreation Fund. And just as a reminder, recap of our assumptions is a total mill increase in 2026 of 2.3 mills. Of 2027 through 2036, the mill levy is flat. 3% annual increase in assessed values, and the ad valorem tax that supports debt service is being shifted to the Recreation Fund. So the bottom line is, this proposed schedule of capital expenditures by funding source is predicated on the assumption that sales tax transferred from the sales tax fund to the Recreation Fund will decrease each year. And in this line, you can see this is what is being proposed, that in 2026, the Recreation Fund would get 1.7 million of sales tax. In 2027, it'd be 1.3 million. On to 2030, we're only transferring 700,000 of sales tax to the Recreation Fund. What that does is each year, it frees up money for CIP projects, and when you add it up over the five years, that's another $4.2 million available for CIP projects. In summary, if we issue no new debt, and the mill levy that supports the debt service is shifted to the Recreation Fund as debt is paid off, the last bond payment will be made in 2036. The Recreation Fund will be fully supported by ad valorem tax by 2034. And over the next five years, there will be an additional $4.2 million of sales tax available to fund the CIP projects. And that's that. Any questions?
It'd be good to get rid of that debt.
Yes, it will be good to get rid of the debt.
Service, yeah.
I was going to say, that's how your finance director finds you some money.
That's what she's been trying to do.
Get rid of the debt service.
Okay. So that's it for PowerPoint. Everything else is in our CIP books.
So as you guys have kind of noticed while Roberta's preparing there, there's kind of three things right now that are kind of giving us the squeeze. As you already mentioned, the debt service payments that are especially large over the next five years, but decrease as we go. And then we are using sales tax to supplement the Recreation Fund, and then we are using General Fund money to supplement our grant payments. And so all of those things in the next two, three years are really crunching us. The good news is, most of those things, as Roberta mentioned, will taper off over the next few years depending on the decisions we make over the next couple of years. So it is absolutely fair to say we are in a crunch right now. It is also fair to say that if we make smart decisions over the next few years, that the city will be in a good financial position moving forward.
Yeah, that sounds correct. All right, so we're going to start just on page one of your book after the second binder. This is just like was presented to you last year. The schedule is broken out by fund, and we start with the Capital Projects Fund. We don't really need to read the page one because that was all presented on your presentation. The only thing that'll draw your attention to is the yellow bar with the zeros in it. And what we did to make, one of the things we did to make the Capital Projects Fund balance was we are not transferring any money from the County White Sales Tax Fund to the Streets Fund for the sidewalk and curb program. On the other hand, we are transferring money to the Streets Fund for sidewalks and curbs. And in that fund, our own employees will be working on sidewalks and curbs downtown. Our first pass at this, we tried to do both, and we did not have money available for both. And then we're going to start on page two with Buildings and Grounds. If you flip to the second, the third tab, you might just want to follow along with the pages that have the pictures on them, but either way, it works. We tried to put quite a bit of description on the summary. So whatever works best for you. You can even take these out, and you can look at them at the same time.
This will also not be your only opportunity to discuss this with us. This is just an overview, so don't feel rushed. We'll be happy to go over this again with you.
And then ideally, you get enough information tonight to understand what we are proposing, and then on or before the budgeting session, we'll be able to go into the things you have questions about and more depth.
Okay.
All right, Brian.
Hello.
Good evening.
That was a good picnic Friday, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
It was nice.
Oh, they got invited.
Of course.
Did your man, did you get to drive?
No, I didn't. Okay, the first item is chillers. It's for City Hall. The City Hall was renovated, as you know, back in the 2004, 2005 timeframe. The chiller that was installed has a life expectancy of between 15 and 20 years. So currently, we're at 21 years. And in addition to just the age of the chiller, the coolant used in that is R22. That's no longer produced or imported to the United States. And so we're looking at a 27 timeframe to replace the chiller, and that'd be about $110,000.
Chiller and air conditioner?
Yeah, that actually, chiller does, and I wrote this down, but the chiller system is used in HVA systems to help regulate temperatures within a large area. The most common type of chiller system is the chilled water HVA system, which uses refrigerant, gets to cool water before it is circulated through piping systems and air handlers throughout the building. This results in cooler air being delivered to each room and helps maintain a more consistent temperature throughout the day, so.
Well, it's always cold in here, so it works.
Chiller is the AC, boiler is the heater.
Okay.
So that's, we got it scheduled for 2022.
Page seven.
Thank you. Next item on there is the annual maintenance projects for City Hall. Each year, we budget $75,000 to do projects around City Hall. As you know, last year was our 100th anniversary of the building. And as the building ages, things will continue to need to be repaired. And so each year, we program in $75,000. The next item on the list is the LED upgrades. This was a three-year program to go around City Hall and other buildings to replace the lights with LEDs. It's more efficient. And so we just programmed in $10,000. This will be the last of the three years.
Okay.
Then City Hall, safety improvements. That's work here within City Hall for safety doors and other improvements here. In 2024, we actually did the HR, where we added a window and additional protection for the HR staff. So people just couldn't walk in unannounced. And there'd be other areas around the city manager's office to provide some safety doors there as well as upstairs. Because right now, someone can come upstairs and just walk into finance or IT or any place unannounced.
I never thought about that.
So this allocation is to do, draw the architect plans so that everything will fit with the city's historical nature.
Okay.
Next item on Building and Grounds is library maintenance. A few years ago, we were funding this at $17,000 a year. We've upped that, I think last year was probably the first year we went to $40,000 a year for maintenance. What you see in here is, it actually talks about some of the projects the library wanted, including powered 88 entrance doors as well as drop ceiling. We'd have to judge this through the year to see how we're doing as far as other maintenance. If we, you know, water heaters or things like that go, we need to replace those first. But if we have money through the year, we'll start to work on those projects.
That's good.
Well, then, the library, I think you are aware, has requested a need study, which would be $56,000. The library would contribute 16 of that. At this point, that is unscheduled. We haven't scheduled that in this presentation.
Okay.
And that's it for Buildings and Grounds. So the next section is the Vehicle Replacement Program and Enterprise Lease Program. And I have quite a bit of information to share with you regarding the Vehicle Replacement Program. Primarily, we were looking at about a $750,000 annual spend on the leases once, and we weren't even finished leasing vehicles. That is way more than we were planning on, and it's more than the city can afford. And it removes our flexibility. We have to pay a lease payment. We're buying our cars, we could defer it. So after a lot of analysis, we've done two things. The first thing we did is reduce, make some changes that will reduce our annual spend immediately. We returned seven vehicles that department heads didn't want to give up but could live without. And then we took 13 vehicles and we downsized them. Those 13 vehicles were recommended by Enterprise because they said, "Oh, these are the ones we could flip and we could get the most money for." Well, those one-year leases turned into two-year leases, turned into six-year, five-year leases, and we haven't been flipping vehicles. All we've been doing is paying big lease payments. So we have identified those vehicles. They've ordered the smaller vehicles. And when they get delivered, it will reduce our monthly spend. Between the downsizing of the fleet and the downsizing of vehicles, we've got that monthly, that annual spend down below $500,000. So in the short term, we're right at $500,000. In the short term, that was the solution. In the long term, we're going to buy our way out of this program. So what happens with the enterprise leases is every car is depreciated. So it starts with a capitalized value of $50,000. And then the next month, there's some depreciation, and now that's $49,500, on and on and on. And with these being five-year leases, sooner or later, we can afford to purchase the vehicle. So one of the things we did when we replaced the vehicles is we replaced them with vehicles that we would have bought, right? No, we don't want, I didn't even know what these vehicles are that code enforcement drives around. We don't want those. They can't even get them in the alleys. We want a little sedan. That's what we would have bought. So we were exchanging all of the vehicles that we never would have bought in the first place with vehicles we would buy. And then as they, as the net book value decreases, we're going to buy those vehicles. So at the end of the five years, we're going to own all the vehicles. So you can see in these two lines, the top line, the 505,413, 415, that's decreasing. That's the lease expense. And then the 88, the 33, the 80, that's how much we're going to spend to buy out the vehicles. It's about $2 million for the vehicles right now. But as we make the lease payments, the net book value goes down. And like I said, those vehicles become affordable. So I basically looked at, how much money do we have this year to buy vehicles? This is how many we can afford. So that's the first premise of this program. Penny is going to talk about the CVV van, and then we'll get into the next section.
So for those who like pictures.
Can we pause real quick? I saw some confused looks. Are there any questions on that right now?
So overall, we never saved money through this leasing program.
Uh, we?
That was the idea.
Well, yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
So when we went into the program, what was, the concept that was sold in 2021, in 2021, is that we would lease vehicles. And every, you know, we'd have a 12-month lease, and at the end of the 12 months, they would flip the vehicle. And because they get a government incentive when they purchase the vehicle, so they're buying a $50,000 vehicle, let's say it had a $10,000 government incentive, so they only paid $40,000 for it. We would drive it for a year, and it would be depreciated. Well, now its net book value is $35,000. Well, they're going to sell the vehicle for $42,000 and give us the $7,000 difference back, right? The 42 minus the 35 net book value. They'd give us that $7,000, and that $7,000 would magically cover our lease payments.
Wow.
That was the premise.
Yeah.
Then COVID happened, and that was, we were told that that was why we couldn't be flipping the vehicles. And in general, after talking to our auditor, we're not the only city in Kansas that's trying to get out of this program.
I got you, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so in fairness, the first few years of the program, '21, '22, '23, we were selling our vehicles, right? So the cash flow that we got from selling the vehicles we already owned, so that was not revenue they generated for us, though they like to tell us that, covered the lease payments. So for the first few years, our cash flow for the program was minimal. But now, we're at that point where there are no more city vehicles to sell. They're not flipping the enterprise vehicles, and we're looking at a $700,000, $700,000 a year bill.
Yeah, that's a good catch-in. Thank you for pausing.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I was confused.
Okay, thank you.
We could get the vehicles in the end.
Yeah. Yeah, I got you, appreciate that.
The, what's good, leased versus owning the vehicles, does this analysis also take into account who's doing the maintenance and how much that's costing?
Yes, yeah. So I looked at the maintenance cost for the last 10 years. I looked at the fuel cost for the last 10 years and compared those to 2024, which is when we were leasing most of the vehicles. And honestly, the numbers weren't very different. They weren't different enough to not do this.
I should have known that you were already taking on.
We also have, in practice, found that we are doing some of our in-house, some of our maintenance in-house that should have been covered through the program. So we ended up, that was, I mean, that is a side note to the larger thing that we were just spending too much money on it, but that was another aspect of it.
Well, and we had several meetings with Enterprise, and we got, finally got the CFO was coming to those meetings, and the head person of the leasing was coming to those meetings. And in these, those meetings, we got a lot of answers. I mean, they did answer every question we had. When we were working with the salesperson, I don't think she was When we were working with the salesperson, I don't think she was capable. So through three or four months of, of interesting meetings, we became much more aware of the financial implication of the program.
Okay.
Okay.
So I was going to say, for those who like pictures, if you look in the second section, page twenty-seven, you'll see our current CBB minivan, and we're looking to replace that with another CBB minivan. So it really doesn't fit in the CIP. The CIP is designed for 2026, a few years. But the reason we're bringing this to your attention now is because we would have replaced the Convention and Visitors Bureau van as part of the enterprise lease program, was on the list to be replaced in 2023. And that just didn't work out with the program. So we're having it here for transparency purposes, because it's going to look like you've never seen this before. And the fact is, you've never seen the fact that we're going to purchase the van now rather than lease it. So we just wanted to take this opportunity to bring it to your attention. The plan is to purchase it actually in 2025. Again, this would have been part of the lease program two years ago. That would have come to the commission. But I will share just some information. So it's a 2015 minivan. Over the last few years, we've had some maintenance issues, the door sticks, and I think there were some transmission items. This vehicle needs to be reliable. It's driven by a single staff member across country to Western Kansas. So it may, this may not still meet the need. It's not part of the CIP, but again, part of the overall city budget. The actual budgets will come back to the city commission. We're going to use additional Convention and Visitors Bureau, so transient guest tax funds. We came in higher than expected in revenues in 2024, so that amount was added to the reserves. So it will cover the cost of the van. We also do anticipate getting a trade-in value from the current minivan. We just don't know what that's going to be. So this is my way of just making sure we have full transparency, that commission has seen this. This is your opportunity to ask any questions, even though it's not part of the numbers for 2026 going through 2030. Any, any other things I can share with you on that?
No.
So the next rather robust portion of the vehicle replacement program is replacing patrol cars, police department patrol cars. We have two patrol cars that need to be replaced right away. And we've already ordered those vehicles to be leased from Enterprise. So we are going to get two more leased vehicles from Enterprise, and those will be patrol cars. After that, we have to go back to purchasing our patrol vehicles. And you're going to see, as we go through these, and I color-coded them by year, it either is going to say, replace an owned patrol vehicle, so that's a vehicle that we, that we own, that we never leased, or it's going to say, replace a leased patrol vehicle. And Pat Kitchens, our chief, chief of police, is going to share the information about this program.
So from the police department's perspective, just a couple of things. There's two categories of cars. We have the patrol fleet, which is the twenty-four black and white police cars that, right? And then the rest of them are detective, admin, that sort of thing. The conversation tonight is going to be about the twenty-four police cars. Getting out of the enterprise leasing program is going to be more complicated than it was getting into it. What we used to do is try and target replacing about four or five cars every year. Because that's about, you know, our experience told us, that's about the time that a car starts to cycle out. About three and a half years, we're over a hundred thousand miles, they're driven all the time, that sort of thing. So what we, what we tried to avoid in a, in a budgeting mechanism was buy one car one year, buy one car the next year, and then get into a situation where we might have to buy eight or nine cars, which would really be impactful to the city's budget and adversely affect the other departments. So by the very nature of our plan, getting back to that may be a little complicated. And so you might see some strange requests, like Roberta talked about, where we might want to lease, but we feel like we need to buy, so that when we ultimately are out of it, we're back to that routine again, which is about four or five cars every year. There's some things that happen to us. We drive a lot, there's a lot of miles. So if, for example, a car is involved in a traffic accident that gets totaled, and we get money from the insurance company. We don't get enough to buy a new one. And if, depends on where that car is, we might wait and just say, okay, we're going to replace that with a new one. There's no sense in spending money on a new one. Or if, let's say, a transmission or an engine goes out, and it's ten thousand dollars to fix. We may purposely delay replacing that car until we get a new one. So we try and account for all those things as best we can. But what we don't want would be to be in a situation where I would have to come and say, we need nine or ten police cars. And so as we manage our way through it, it may look weird. We're just trying to make sure we don't end up in an adverse situation here in a few years when we're out and back to normal. The other complication, I'm going to invite our deputy chief up to the podium to talk about ordering police cars, which is the one piece that's also a little bit complicated, and Dan does that for us. So I want him to talk about that in terms of us trying to get new cars. And so if the major would talk about that.
So when we go back to purchasing patrol cars, we have to look ahead. Because what I ask for now will not be on the road in service until late fall next year, probably September or October. So we take a look at the mileage of the overall fleet. I know the average mileage for each of the cars that are on the road. And we do a projection out as to how many we're going to ask for now. And in the process is, in early to the, 2026, we will put out requests for bids on those patrol cars after writing specs for them. And then the car manufacturers who do police package vehicles will submit bids, and then we will pick one of those. There's a narrow ordering window, which, with each of those manufacturers. So we've got to be able to hit that window. Once we're outside of that window, we're kind of subject to what might be on a lot somewhere. And so when we order in early 2026, those cars will be built, delivered mid-year, outfitted, and then we'll have them in service by late fall, September.
I think that's the message from the police department, is getting out of it is going to be a little more complicated than what it was getting into it. So if it looks a little strange, we're trying to do our best to manage, mitigate, and spread the wealth, you know, over the next few years to get it back to a normal routine.
Okay.
So to follow up on that, if you look at page three of the book, you'll, well, page two and three, you'll see that we've got four vehicles scheduled to purchase in 2026, along with the two that we're going to lease. Then if we just use the schedule of when the vehicles should be replaced, we'd only replace one vehicle in twenty-seven, then we'd have three in twenty-eight, and then we'd have one, two, three, four, eight in 2029, and a whole bunch in 2030. So what may end up happening, what we'd like to end up happening, is maybe pull these 2028 vehicles into twenty-seven so that we've got, buying four new vehicles at the same time.
Makes more sense.
Yeah. Pull some of the 2029 vehicles into twenty-eight, so we can get back on the schedule that, that the police department was on before we started the program. That obviously is going to be dependent on cash flow. But I, I put the schedule together based off of when we would replace them. No cash flow, you know, not concerning cash flow. But, but that's what we're going to try to do, is pull them in so we can buy four or five a year.
Okay. All right.
Any questions about that?
That's clear as mud.
Is it muddy?
It's fine.
Okay.
It's fine, I understand what you're saying. Yeah.
Okay, I'll get the hose.
Well, it does speak to that we have found this program to be unnecessarily complicated. It has not saved money. It has been wholly unpopular with our department heads in that they are not getting the vehicles that they really need. They're getting the vehicles based on a potential sale value. So I think that overall, this is the right, Roberta and the team put a lot of work into this. A lot of meetings, they're really, a lot of detail-oriented meetings. And our department heads also really did a good job of stepping up to the plate and offering vehicles up for sacrifice, so to speak. So I, I really am, personally, am very happy with the final product of this, and I think we're headed in the right direction on it.
I'm glad you cut back the number of vehicles, you know, in the other departments, too. That's good. Thank you.
Yeah. It's a miss. Next up is our IT director, information technology. So the page five is the summary pages, and your actual pictures start on page twenty-nine. Twenty-nine. So depending on what you like looking at, you're either on page five or twenty-nine.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Marcus.
As we forecast the twenty-six to thirty IT CIP budget request, I'd just like to emphasize that my commitment is to maintaining current technology for the city, and that is secure and efficient. My efforts to make the IT budget predictable every year over a five-year period. Many small cities have recently been victims of cyber attacks and cyber crimes. So to minimize our risk, we must continuously monitor and secure our perimeter, following industry best practices. Now, we need to get current and stay current with all hardware and software components on our network. That will eliminate risk. So all the technology on our network can be a security risk. So we take a layered approach to cybersecurity, which simply means we deploy multiple security controls to protect our technology environment where a breach or a cyber attack could occur. So the first technology priority for 2026 is our firewalls. That's on page twenty-nine. This project is a life cycle upgrade for 2026. Our firewalls will reach end of life August 31st next year. Firewalls are our first line of defense. They're our perimeter for our security. Firewalls allow network traffic in and out based on a defined set of rules. They're essentially what keeps the bad guys out. Our second priority is the allocation of computer equipment replacement, and that's on page thirty. This is an annual program to fund the life cycle of all IT equipment in the city. This is a, we established a life cycle for all PCs, laptops, printers, monitors, and scanners. And our goal is just to not have fifteen-year-old PCs running around the city. They're hard to maintain.
What is the replace, what is the age, age of the, what is the age of the life cycle? What is the?
Four years on PCs, laptops, monitors as they fail. Printers as they fail. And with printers, we make a decision if they need to be replaced or removed from service.
Okay.
Older PCs won't run the new operating systems that's required. So we have to keep them all in, in a good working order. Our third priority is our UPS's uninterrupted power supplies. That's critical in my three data centers. It's a life cycle upgrade. The ones we have will be ten years old next year. The UPS is when we lose power to the building or power fluctuations, they condition that power. And they keep our servers running. Extremely important that those don't fail with weather in Leavenworth. The fourth priority for 2026 is to upgrade the technology in the commission chambers. That's page thirty-two. This project is a collaboration with the city manager's office, the PIO's office, and IT. We've talked about what we need to do in this room. This current system has been modified and added on ad hoc over many years. It's solved many problems and hosted many meetings, but it's time for a refresh. We intend to choose technology that's intuitive, easy to use, for staff to support and operate. Really what we're looking for is an easy button in this room to turn the technology on and support the meetings. We need something that's reliable and secure. We're looking at accessibility. It's required for this project. We, we must consider features that enhance the usability for all participants, including those with disabilities. So upgrading and replacing the sound system will allow you to hear out here, where now it's super hard to hear sitting in the back there. We would like to future-proof this investment with scalable technology that could accommodate future advancements. Recordings recently have failed to convert properly, and we just want to make sure when we record a meeting, it's what we need.
Right.
I want to put a pin in that one real quick. And, you know, one of your guys is, I'm going to be a broken record about this, but I'm serious about it. One of your priorities, right, is increase the digitization of the city.
Yeah.
And this, this project in particular is talking about increasing the accessibility for people on virtual and in, and in person, excuse me. But to make this more, a more virtual environment when we have meetings and when we interact with the public here, to, to make that one of your priorities. Just wanted to.
I, I still get told a lot that they can't hear us, and it may be, we need to speak more in the mics, but.
Oh, I can't hear when I call in. I can't hear anybody hardly. I don't know about you, Jermaine, or Ed, or Nancy.
I've called in, but I didn't have any trouble too much, really.
But that was, that was one of the things I was going to add, that it will make the meetings when you can't be here in person much better for both you and the people here.
And the people at home. That'd be good. Yeah. It would make it easier.
You could have public participation promoted.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I mean, so that would be.
That'd be good.
Pretty impressive. It's one button.
Easy button.
One button.
There won't be one, but that's.
Easy button.
Come on, Harvey, come on. It's a red button. The big red button.
Future technology projects, twenty-seven beyond, on page thirty-three, our routers will be a life cycle replacement in 2028. Routers are the traffic cops in every building. They manage and direct our network traffic based on a set of rules. Number six is edge switches on page thirty-four. That will be a life cycle budget in 2029, the year our switches are expected to reach end of support. The switches are the path for computers to talk to the routers, to talk to the servers, to talk to the internet, so. Number seven on page thirty-five is our Alatra storage system. This will be a life cycle replacement of our SAN and the host servers in 2029. The SAN is where most of our servers and data reside. Number eight on page thirty-six is our Marocque Wi-Fi. They've announced end of life on our current wireless access points in twenty-seven. And we provide wireless in fifteen locations, so we'll replace that. And number nine is our core switches, which will be a life cycle replacement in 2030. These switches securely connect all of our buildings. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
There you go, self-explanatory.
Okay, we have a couple of items for the police department, neither one of which are scheduled. But Pat, did you want to talk about them briefly?
Madam Commissioner, I appreciate the opportunity to visit this evening. We submitted the gun range project, really as a baseline project. Over the course of the last two or three years, we currently, I'm sorry, let me start with me. We share the gun range at the Lansing Correctional Facility and have for many years. Spent some small occasions over my career that we shared the federal firearms at the USP facility. The difficulty is, it's getting more and more difficult to schedule the training and to schedule range time with the officers, because there's a lot of agencies that share the facility. It's aging, it's getting older. And so we started to have the conversations about constructing our own gun range, which will serve two purposes. One, for obvious reasons, we need to shoot a lot to remain proficient. But also, we introduced an element of a training facility there. State law requires officers to get forty hours of training every year to maintain their certification. So in addition to the firearms piece, it also creates a facility for us to go out and train more. We try and target seventy-five hours. We believe fundamentally that training our officers helps us be better overall. So we employ the services of an architect to give us a sense of where we would land if we were going to construct an outdoor gun range. And that came in at one-point-two-million dollars. So that gave us an idea of where we were going to land in a budget number if that were the plan. We also spent some conceptual ideas on an indoor range. An indoor range is probably going to be closer to four to four-and-a-half million dollars. The requirements for an indoor range have to do with the air quality, making sure that the air is scrubbed and collecting the lead. And so that makes it a much more expensive facility to do. Throughout the conversations, I think, early when we talked about it, a goal setting, there was some discussion, at least. there was some discussion at least for us to consider a public-private partnership. So we've started that project as well to get some sense about where we would land with that. And so we, again, the purpose of the submittal is at some point in the future, probably in the five-year window, we're going to need to really move this up, or we advocate to move it up in terms of the priority. But it's a baseline conversation and it's really starting to have those conversations. Let us get a sense from where you were with that. And so we're going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to explore those things. We're going to have to address it at some point, but it was sort of a baseline conversation. And I wanted to get a sense from you about what you felt about that. And then we got the information about the public-private partnership, which is something that happens. And so we can, we can build on that and go from there.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The, you use USP or the old prison, the old prison, right? And in, in the range, is it, is it near the prison? Is it behind the prison? And is it going to be used by the new prison?
Those are all excellent questions. The first one of which, it is south of where we go to have lunch, the training facility there. There is a range there. I'm not sure that it's still active, quite honestly. I don't know the answer to that question about whether they're going to continue. I presume that they will if it's still available and still functioning. I presume that. We still hear them occasionally, just not as much.
Yeah. Yeah, I forgot they used to do that up there. I guess that's, public-private, I can't remember now what we talked about with that.
So that, that would be, so the concept would be that the city would construct it and operate it generally. The police department would have somebody that operates it generally. But some periods of time, the public could come in and pay to use it. And I think that would offset some of the cost of running the range, whether it's an indoor/outdoor range. I think that's part of the process. There are some facilities across the country that we've looked at conceptually, but there are entities that do that. That requires, for example, the NRA provides some assistance to local communities to do that, you know, help offset the cost of building a range. And so that's something that we, that's something that we would, you know, build on from our conversation today.
Any possibility of other law enforcement agencies working together?
I think so. I think that there is, there's the opportunity to do that, especially the law enforcement community in particular. The sheriff's department has its own range. The difficulty was that. It's way out there in the county. And so logistically, it's a little bit of a difficult issue. So it would probably be something like Leavenworth, Lansing, Mesa, Tongki, you know, that kind of thing. But yes, is the answer. Certainly some opportunity to combine our efforts maybe and all participate.
Lots of things.
If they could participate, couldn't we really participate financially a little bit too?
You'd have to.
That would truly be the idea, right?
Have to. That's it. That's what I meant.
You could also offer.
Not just dues or anything like that, yeah.
That's what I meant.
You could also offer, you know, private, you know, training, you know, safety courses, things like that, concealed carry, things like that. You could add a retail component. So people want to come and purchase firearms and accessories, you know, things like that. So there's, there's ways you could, could not only make it a successful training, training area for our police department, but to have a community benefit as well.
Yeah, that sounds interesting.
Yeah, timeframe-wise, Pat, like, realistically, when would you like to see something like that come to fruition?
I understand things are going to be looking really, really good financially in three years. That's what I heard, sir. So let me make sure that I accurately described to you what, I paid very close attention to you, Robert.
Like five.
We're not in any sort of emergency. It's not urgent or anything like that. However, it's getting, we, we needed to start having the conversation and we needed to start talking about it. And for my own indication, I really, I've heard a lot, but I needed to know, hey, what are we really looking at fundamentally? I wonder how much this is going to be really before. And so five years, four years, something like that. We really needed to have the conversation, get some baseline, which is where we are. I'm good with that. And then we'll kind of see how it goes. We've got a lot of work to do on the public-private partnership piece, though. That is going to require a little bit more work, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And also, in fairness to Chief Kitchen and the police department, their top priority immediately remains the body cameras and the car camera systems, which we discussed during the budget goal-setting session. You're not discussing that tonight because in order to make the funds work, we've moved that into the operating budget. So that conversation will be occurring this year. So we're just not talking about it tonight. But certainly want to keep that in the back of your heads. It's worth mentioning that a couple of these CIP projects have taken a backseat to that from the police department's standpoint.
And the, and the body cameras are in the operating budget because it's an annual spend. It's a lease.
Yeah, this is bigger.
So it really isn't appropriate.
Bigger thing.
Absolutely.
Chief, do you pay anything now to the, to the range that you're using?
No, no.
Okay, it's just, yeah, okay, we got time.
Right, right. So if there's no more questions about that, I think the other piece of the CIP that the police department submitted was a resumetal of the police department's armored car known as the Bearcat. We got that and it's 22 years old. The general life cycle for a vehicle like that is 15 years. We got that from a federal grant through the Mid-American Regional Council. And that was associated with after 9/11, there was a lot of money made available to local law enforcement agencies. It's a regional vehicle in its original form. So that means that when we got, by we, I mean the law enforcement agencies inside the 435 loop, which is generally associated with the Mid-American Regional Council, there were six of them sent to our area through MARK. Three of them are in Missouri and three of them are in Kansas. One is in Leavenworth County, one's in Windup County, and one's in Johnson County. And so that was the original agreement. We all, through mutual aid, share and respond. And if they need it in Kansas City or Bonner or something like that, we make it available to them. That was the deal. And so it's now, we need to start having conversations about replacing it. It's past its sort of normal time to replace it. We allocated some money towards replacing about half. We continue to strive to seek assistance from our partners at the federal level. If you might recall, last year in the budget, we got some money from Congressman L. Turner, made some money available for our bomb equipment. And so we're continuing to look at that. Scott and I talked about perhaps asking some of the law enforcement agencies in the county to participate potentially in helping offset the cost of replacing the vehicle.
That's a good idea.
But right now, it would be, we have about half of the money allocated for it. And so we're looking to find additional resources to get the vehicle replaced.
I like the idea of shared cost if we can.
So we're going to ask and see what happens, regardless of whether that they choose or don't choose to do that. Certainly, we would make it available like we always do. Everybody shares everything with each other. But we're certainly going to explore that as we move forward, trying to find some additional revenue sources to, to replace the whole thing.
Are you going to keep the 2004 model for like training purposes or something?
Probably not, for a couple of reasons. One of which, we have to store it somewhere and so we can't.
Put it in my garage.
Sure. You can bid on Purple Wave.
Just leave it in the.
We'll just drive it during the parades, you know.
Yeah.
So we've evaluated what we were going to do with the old. And the most likely scenario would be sell it. There's a government website that these sorts of things.
To the highest bidder.
Right, so. I think one sold two years ago or three years ago for like $65,000, something like that.
Good, good.
Sell, I mean, selling these large vehicles obviously help offset the replacement of them.
Yeah, sure.
So.
It's very surprising.
So.
I, I think that's a good idea. We should use those things, you know, to ride the mayor around, you know, in parades and such, you know.
I think that's it for now.
That is, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, now Chief Birch will come up and talk to you about the CIP requests for the fire department.
Good evening.
They start on page 40 for the details and they're on page six of the summarized schedule.
First, the 2026 budget, CIP, the actually the only thing we have outside of where the new station is replacing some of our older defibrillators. The ones we, we've got some that we've cycled, like there's, you know, we've got some on the trucks and then those would slide down to like the staff cars and stuff. The older ones are just, can't even get the batteries redone and stuff in them now. And we always try to buy the same kind that we, our pads that go on when we use them in the field, that we, we want something compatible with EMS. So they get the cert, they switch out the pads for us, so that saves us some cost there. But they're getting older and that's, and that's basically all that we had asked for. The other, the other money this year is what they call the FFE, the fixtures and furniture equipment for the new station. And that's about it. The rest of it's pushed out the other years. Station two lockers a few years back, it's been quite a few years back. We replaced some of the wardrobes. They were, when they were, you know, purchased in 2000, 2001, they were wooden and they held up pretty good, but it's just, it's kind of time to replace those. So we put that back on there to try to replace those. It's been sitting there for a while. And that's about it, other than going out more years. Our system, our security system, door entry system that we have at two stations, station one and two, we didn't do it at three at the time because we knew it would be building a new station. But it's compatible where you can actually have a cameras installed too that work off of it, that you can monitor the parking lots and the doors and stuff. Something we'd like to do.
So going back to the fixtures, furniture, and equipment, we do have a quote of about $190,000. The bond proceeds were invested and the interest income from those bond proceeds is going to cover about $100,000 of the furniture fixtures. So we'll only need to come up with about $90,000 from sales tax fund. And then the final thing on Chief Birch's schedule is replacing the apparatuses. So y'all are aware, it takes about three years from the day you order an apparatus until the date gets delivered. Chief Birch really wanted to order five apparatus on, or four apparatus in 2029. And you can see that I put one in to order in 2030 and then unscheduled the rest and tried to do one a year. If we do that, I believe we'll be able to cash flow the purchase of the apparatus versus borrowing money for the purchase of the apparatus.
Good, good.
But we do need to keep in mind that we need to order these vehicles, you know, three or four years before delivery date.
You have to account for that money when you order it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sounds good.
Right, so you may recall that we ordered an Ariel. Is that what we ordered, the $1.4 million truck last year? Is that an Ariel? And it should be delivered in a couple of years. When we did that, we transferred $1.4 million into the capital project fund and it's just sitting there waiting for the truck to be delivered. Due to Kansas Cash Basis Law, we have to have the money available when we actually replace the PO. It is, that money's invested, so it's earning interest, but, but we can't spend it on anything else.
I certainly understand this concept. I don't necessarily agree with it. The reason why I've been down the road many a time with apparatus, apparatus, and we've already got the ones, we're running more calls all the time and the three that we bought in 2017 are already around 70,000 miles.
Okay.
It was, you know, when I tried to put that plan into place, we replaced one every, you know, every four years. So we had 28-year-old trucks. They just don't hold up and the maintenance goes up and stuff. And so we bought three and that, you know, I was pushed at that time, you know, that was behind the scenes with the signature that time, which was Scott, for a 12-year replacement.
Scott?
Scott Miller.
Scott Miller. The other Scott?
No.
Before your time.
Scott Miller, yeah. And so it ended up at 15 years. The problem when we're doing this, you already see it's going to push it out to 16, 17, 18 years, 19 years for your place. And what I have found in my career is that some, oh, we're a little tight on money this year, so we're not going to do it. And now you pushed out farther. And that's, that's my fear. That's probably going to be way beyond my retirement, but still, it's just a concern mine.
Okay, take that into consideration.
There, there, there is some help there in that what we just mentioned is when you order it, you have to account for that money. So you can't push that money back once you, once it's paid for. So I, we certainly get Chief Birch's concern. I think it's valid. Our attempt here is to, you know, as we mentioned, order a truck well in advance of when we need it and then put that money aside because we have to count for it anyways, so it's locked in.
Yeah.
But I certainly understand his concerns there.
Gotcha. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks. So we're going to bring Brian Faust, our Public Works Director, back up to talk you about engineering and then Public Works. Engineering's on page seven of the summary. And you'll see the first item.
Page 45.
What page?
45.
45.
First item is our bridge inspection program. We're required by the federal officials to inspect all of our bridges every two years. It's not something that we can skip on. We do have 26 bridges on the national bridge inventory. We also do inspect culverts, a few other things that are just under 20 feet in length. A bridge is defined as 20 feet and greater. If we have something that's 19 feet, we don't have to inspect it, but we do. So a total of 38 structures are inspected every two years. And we run about $45,000 a year for that. We are inspecting them in 2025. That'll be probably starting next week.
Okay. That's good.
Next item is our PCI assessment on page 46. That's something we started in 2016. We were doing this every three years. We did it in 2016, 2019. We were scheduled to do it in 2022, but timing and pandemic and everything else it ended up in 2023. We felt three years was appropriate to get through the city, but we actually think four years will work just fine. This is something that evaluates the pavement treatments that we do each year to see if it's effective. And we can make decisions based on that.
That's good.
The next item is a drone replacement. Our GIS department has a drone purchased in 2024. This is actually scheduled for 2030. Advancements in technologies and what the drones can do. So it's going to be a six-year replacement cycle. So we're proposing. Public Works equipment. In 2026, we show four items. We initially submitted for two dump trucks with new spreaders and plows. We requested $200,000 a year, excuse me, $200,000 each for each truck. After evaluating and understanding what the situation was financially, we have two trucks that are actually filled that are in good shape, but the bodies of the dump beds have completely rusted out and the spreaders are not working well. And so what we're proposing in 2026, instead of replacing the entire truck with bed, we're just going to keep the truck, but replace the dump bed and the spreader and plow.
Good.
And so that went from $200,000 to $50,000 for those two trucks. We also show a brine, Henderson brine maker. We started using brine a couple of years ago pre-treating. It's worked really well. It's cut the amount of salt we've had to purchase each year. You know, in '25, and starting in January, we had some pretty severe weather events. I don't think that's going to get any better. And so we, we need a brine maker that, this one will actually make 6,000 gallons per hour. What we're doing now is 800 gallons per hour. And we can blow that very quickly. I mean, we'll go through it and dump it and we need that ability to make more. And then the last item in 2026 is a Polaris Ranger side-by-side. And what we found is both Public Works as well as wastewater treatment plant, those Polaris's, that type side-by-side is extremely valuable to get to areas that we can't get with pickup trucks. We have plows on those, so we can do sidewalks and parking lots and those types of things. And I can go through 27 through 30. Again, we are trying to do a 10- to 14-year replacement cycle. As appropriate on our equipment, you'll see some of the stuff we have in 2011, 20, 2008. We're just trying to get back on a 10- to 14-year replacement cycle.
Okay.
One that you haven't seen before until this year was a replacement of our fuel system at operations. The tanks that are out there were installed in 1993. And so they're currently, that would be 22 years old. It'd be 32 years old right now. They have a life cycle of 30 years. And we've been notified by KDHE that that's not a good thing, that we need to plan on replacing those tanks. If we do have leakage in an underground tank, it'd get really expensive really quick of removing the soil that's contaminated. So it's important that we do this. We looked at a couple of options. Is this something that we can replace? Can we go buy fuel somewhere else like a QuickTrip or someplace like that? that we can replace? Can we go buy fuel somewhere else like a QuickTrip or someplace like that? We do provide fuel for lease, fire, ride LV, our trash trucks, everything that we provide fuel for. With our trucks, the only place that we can get fuel around here without hitting the canopy would be QuickTrip. If you've got a big rubber tire loader, we don't want to rode it all the way down. We use the fuel that we put in it by the time we got back to town. So we feel it's important to replace the tank.
Okay.
We show that in 2027. Estimate was nine, six hundred and ten thousand. It's kind of broken down by departments on who uses what fuel.
That's it that we have on here for you?
Thank you, Brian.
Next up is going to be Steve Grant, our Parks and Rec Director, talking about everything in the Recreation Fund, and Brian Bailey.
Thank you, Roberta.
Our Deputy Parks and Rec Director.
Good evening, Mary Commissioners. Good evening.
Good evening.
Brian and I work real closely, hand in hand on all this, intertwined between both of us. Sometimes he takes the lead on some, and I take the lead a little more. So we thought we would tag team on this. We better answer some specific questions as we go through this. So we're on top of page nine, and we'll start with indoor pool restorations at the community center.
Yep. So this is a two-phase project. We're starting our first phase this year, and next year will be our second phase. This year's first phase was all electricity with overhead lights, and then masonry stuff within the pool, and then also pool furnishings such as the chairlifts and stairs going down into the pool and things like that. So the second phase is going to be the stuff in the pump room, like butterfly valves, piping, things like that, and so forth. And then if there's enough money left over, we'll look at the floor within the pool as well. So that's, that's what we're looking at for the pool restorations. The next one you see right?
You say the floor of the pool itself?
No, the floor.
Around the pool?
Yeah, around the pool and the locker room and so.
The locker rooms. We're hoping if we can come in under budget enough that we can maybe take another look at those floors.
Or sue the company to put them in.
The next one.
Serious. They are a mess.
The next one on the list is.
The same one. Sorry.
Pool painting area. This includes the ceilings, the walls, the handrails, the HVAC, piping, and so forth. That hasn't been done since 1988. And we've had the air conditioner go out a couple times, which caused humidity within the pool area, which causes staining within the ceiling and so forth. So it's just well long overdue, long overdue for that. We replace that right after the restorations because of the dust and dirt and grime that will be caused during the restorations. So that's that.
And it's pretty involved, let us add on to that, when you're doing the ceiling over a pool like that.
Yeah, bad.
Obviously, yeah, to be able to get up there and do that.
That's a tough scaffolding.
Correct, yes, yes. Continuing on in community center improvements, we're starting in 26, we'll have the second year of a five-year phase system of replacing fitness equipment down in the weight room. It was very successful this year. We got five new items, two multifunctional trainer-smith center combos, a nice stair climber, an incline-decline bench, as well as an upright bike with a nice LED screen. So we've upgraded some of that equipment. And then kind of the way I've been going with that is I, you know, later this year, I've been trying to get input from our patrons, our regulars, you know, what's the oldest, what's the most dilapidated, what gets used the least. So that's kind of the route I've been going on, replacing that. So first year of that phase was very successful, and hopefully here over the next four years, we're able to bring everything up to, up to date in the, in the weight room and the cardio room. Walk-behind floor scrubber, that was actually our highest priority. I have absolutely no idea how old it is. It was there when I started at the city in 2002. There's no, there's no date on it, there's no hours, there's nothing like that on it. It has some interior transmission issues, making it somewhat unsafe to run by, unless you're extremely skilled. We use that to scrub the floor, the track downstairs, the gym floor, and we do put it on the elevator and bring it upstairs into the meeting rooms and use it there. It's very similar to what you would see like at Sam's Club or Walmart or whatever, although it's not, we're not getting one that you ride on, and we're not getting one that doesn't have somebody operating it like you, like you see.
Yeah.
Vanquished chairs. I think everybody in this room has sat in the chairs in the rearview room. They've been, they were last replaced going on twenty-three years ago. We've done a lot of work welding over time, obviously working on stains with them. Every now and then, if you've sat in one, you'll kind of go through them sometimes. It's, they're long overdue.
I didn't realize they were that old.
Yeah, so it's been a while. So we're looking at, we actually have a hundred of different black pattern that we used in the south wing, and since we've moved our offices in there, we're not using those anymore. And they're much less used over there. So our, our goal is, is to replace the gray ones in the rearview room that we use in those meeting rooms with the similar, with the exact same pattern as the others. And that'll give us a uniform chair for the entire facility, which we do some nights. We'll fill up all three of those rooms with a big wedding reception or something with, you know, over four hundred guests in there. So that'll be, it'll be nice. We'll salvage what, any, any chairs that can be salvageable will be put on Purple Wave to sell. That's another item for, in the community center, the tables, the round tables that you sit at in the, in the rearview room. We're looking at replacing fifteen of those. The current ones we have are wood. A lot of them have chunks missing out of them, hardware broken on them. You don't see some of the damage because it's quite often covered with the tablecloths.
Tablecloths, yeah.
Are you getting bigger ones? Are they going to be six? Six tops, eight tops? Because don't we have, don't you have both?
So yeah, so they're, they're seventy-two inches, or they're sixty, they're sixty inches, which they'll put eight at those. It's pretty tight. And we are going to go with composite now. The ones we currently have are wood. So we're going to go with the composite, it's easier, well, they last longer, and it's easier on staff to move them around.
Yeah, bad.
So we're looking at fifteen, sixty-inch round tables, four eight-foot-long tables, and then two seventy-two-inch half rounds that we use a lot of times on the sides and stuff. The next two items are unscheduled. We've reviewed these in the past. One's the indoor track down in the basement, and the other one is the gym floor, which seems to be holding up very well.
When was the last time the gym floor was replaced? Do you remember?
It was in 2002, or three, I mean, excuse me.
Oh, that was after the flood?
The gym, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
But it's, you know, it's, it's held up really well. It's got a couple of holes here and there, a couple of bubbles, and, and the little covers that covered the volleyball standards, you know, are taped now so they don't look the best because they'll pop up. But other than that, it's held up.
That's lasted really well.
It really has, it really has. We've been very impressed with it.
You think it's going to last another five more years?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so. But, you know, we wanted to get it on the radar.
Yeah.
You know, seeing as it is twenty-three years old and has some small issues, overall it's extremely safe.
Okay.
It's very playable, you know. It's, it's, it doesn't get the dead spots with that type of flooring like you would on a real wood floor, like you've ever been, you know, under regular basketball court.
And we haven't had any floods. I think that's why it was replaced so often before, because we kept having floods down there.
Yeah, and we made some good improvements to keep, even, even simple things like that drive that comes into the back of the community center where we just made that little hump that keeps a lot of storm water from coming around.
Yeah, you guys did a lot after that last flood.
And I'll turn it back over, Brian.
Yep. Next on our list is a replacement of the pull-behind leaf vacs that we used. We have two vacuums that we'd be replacing and bringing it down to one vacuum. These are getting pretty old. One of them has nine hundred and ninety-nine hours, the other one has fifteen hundred and twenty hours, and we're, we're just having maintenance problems with them.
Which is a two thousand and eight, yeah.
Yeah, so they're, they've aged out. The next one is a replacement tractor. This tractor's twenty-seven years old. We use this tractor to put fertilizer on our sports fields, on our soccer fields, to do small tasks. This is a very small tractor. It could almost be mistaken for a lawnmower-type tractor. It's, it's that small of a tractor. But it's a vital part of our, our equipment, and we're just, we're having some problems with transmission and engine problems with it. Next on the list is a replacement of our sixteen-foot self-propelled Jacobson. This is our biggest mower that we have. It replaces four to five of our Ferris mowers. It also takes up four or five seats on a lawnmower. We can mow sixteen-foot wide swipes through our parks. And it's a vital piece of our equipment in our Parks Department during the summer. So we're getting a lot of hours on it. The replacement on this is seven to ten years. We're hitting that real soon, Mike. And so we'll, we'll, we're wanting to replace that. The next one is another vital piece of our, our mowing equipment. It's an eleven-foot self-propelled mower. It's a little bit smaller than the Jacobson. We're getting a lot of hours on it. It's actually a little bit older, a year older unit than the Jacobson. It's, since it's a little bit smaller, it's holding up a little bit better than the larger piece of equipment. So that's why it's scheduled out a little bit further, a year further. But it's, it's one of those things that we have to have. Next on the list, you're going to see is truck three forty-three. That is our park service truck. This truck goes out in the field when a lawnmower breaks down, one of our tractors breaks down. It can go out and field weld soccer goalposts, basketball posts. It does a lot of jobs in our department, and it's, it's one of those things that's vital.
Definitely.
Yeah, we're getting, it doesn't have a lot of miles on it, but the age is what's catching up to it and the size of it. So we also use this truck to pull mowers out of ditches when they get stuck out in the, out in the mud. That happens from time to time, and so, so that's that.
So I just want to interject. At this point, you see four unscheduled trucks. They don't, they're not scheduled for replacement in the next five years, and they don't need replacement in the next five years. What I asked all of the department heads to do this year was tell me every vehicle you have. Let's get it on the list. Let's put the age on, in here so that we, so it's on our radar. It doesn't surprise us next year when it pops up. So we did try to capture all the vehicles, and a lot of the other equipment is on here, is unscheduled, just to put it on our radar. So everyone's from like twelve pages to twenty pages with the schedule, just to have that information in front of us.
Yeah, just a quick note, these are four vehicles that are not part of the enterprise fleet. These are city-owned vehicles.
Catching, okay.
Okay, next one on the list is lighting the basketball court, new basketball court over at Cody Park. It's, it's not nearly as expensive as if we were to bring in new lights and new service to, say, like the skate park or some other place, because we are, we would be able to, to go right into the, the new Musco lighting system that we put in for the pickleball court.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I get a call on this once a week. I had no idea, like, this is how popular. Can this get moved up at all, or no?
Twenty twenty-eight.
It was pretty far.
Well, we all get to make those decisions. We'll have to push something else out. So that's part of the, that's part of the game.
I get a lot of people calling.
Oh, yeah, I play out there as well, so with my kids. So it's definitely a huge game.
But when we're done, and maybe, you know, a good opportunity to discuss, if we want to push things out or pull things in, would be at the beginning of the budget session, the all-day budget session, because that'll give you time to kind of look through this and decide if you think your priorities are different than what, what we thought the priorities were.
Yeah, let's make a note on that.
Steve?
Sir.
How late would the light remain on?
So ten o'clock. Parks closes at ten o'clock.
Kids are out there playing in the dark.
Yeah, so it'd be scheduled, just like the pickleball courts. If you go at ten oh one, you can't turn the lights on at the pickleball courts.
Thanks.
You'll see next to that, just real quick, in the follow-up, a priority rank, two of two, and that comes from our, our goal-setting session, when we talked about Cody Park. The number one priority, we talked about the fence on the south end of the court to keep balls from, we currently have a PO in place. We went ahead with, I believe, city manager contingency or whatever. It's a really, you know, fairly low dollar not to go ahead and do that. So that's in the works.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, it's a safety issue, too.
Next on it is install of heaters in, in three of our park restrooms. This is getting fairly low on our list. We have three restrooms that does not have heat during the winter. So that means we can't open them up as early in the spring as we open the rest. So there's some restrooms that stay closed a little bit longer. Having the heaters in the restroom also helps us guarantee that we're not going to have any frozen pipes in the winter. Right now, we've put some little box heaters in there that kind of handle the cold, but it's not real great. So.
I'm all for heat.
Yeah.
We like it cold around here.
Yeah.
The next one is the Riverfront Park fence replacement. We scheduled that out to 2029 in hopes that once the bridge is done, then we'll replace the fence. There's no need in putting a new fence down there when a new bridge is coming through, and they'll tear it all up.
Yeah.
So we discussed that a little ways out.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Hopefully the new bridge is done by then.
Right.
New bridge.
The next one, talking about, talking about trails, during our CIP discussions, we talked about we've been extending the Havens Trail over the last few years, and that was, is what we're working on this year. And then we talked about going forward, what the priorities were, and, and we had basically one more year's worth of work up there where we could complete all of the asphalt trail up at Havens Park. So we took money that would have been earmarked towards trail construction up there in 26 and went ahead and, and knocked it all out this year.
Yeah, that's great.
So, yeah, it's, it's really neat. I know, I know you guys got some calls about what's with the gravel road up there, but.
I didn't like, what did they say it was? A wetland up there?
Wetland, it is not a wetland.
Not at the top of the hill.
I didn't think so.
There's a lot of bedrock up there. So at, once it does rain, it doesn't really go anywhere for a while. So it could be perceived as, as a wetland. But if you, if you try to drill anything up there, it's, it is, it's like, it's a rock. So anyhow, that's, that's where we're at on the trails. And then beyond next year, nothing is scheduled at this time. The next couple items, our, next three items are not scheduled. One was overhead protection and shade over the bleachers at Sports Field. Cody Park restroom concession facility replacement. We had, the one that's there was remodeled in 2013, remains perfectly functional.
Yeah.
Is it pretty nice and new? No, but it is, it is functional. We are looking, you'll recall, we have some money this year for some, to add shade. We're putting some shade structures actually between the pickleball courts, and then we're also going to modify this restroom, get rid of some of the wood that's there, and do some sort of shade up in that area.
Is there any shade on the pickleball courts?
Not on the courts, in that way, in between.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we got four, they call them cabanas. I think they're eight-foot, is that right? Eight-foot cabanas where they have a double bench and a little canopy over them for people to sit. Yeah, and they'll go in between the courts in that center section. And then, and then the last one, in 2023, during our goal-setting sessions, at the direction of the City Commission, we looked into a gazebo park development and developed a master plan from that to have a very nice, high-class, first-rate downtown.
Park.
Park, exactly, for small events, and, and it's right there on Delaware, you know, for viewing the, viewing the parades and stuff that they go by.
Next on the list is painting of the locker rooms, restrooms, offices and break rooms at the Woman Aquatic Center. The last time those areas were painted was 2011, and if you go there now, you'll see patches on the walls where we've covered up graffiti, things like that. And so it's, it's due for, for some new paint. The one after that is the woman pool painting and caulking. That is the actual pool itself inside the pool, repainting that. The lap lanes are becoming faded, the white's not so white anymore, and the caulking that is in the pool itself is failing. We've had, this year before we opened, we had to have some caulking redone by a company, and so it's, it's time. The next one is the Woman Aquatic Center, again, the deck caulking and repairs. If you go out there, the deck, the concrete around the pool is starting to become a little bit uneven. We have the, the caulking of the deck there is, is deteriorating, allowing water to go down there, freeze thaw, having some, some problems there. So that's what, that's what that is. And then the last one on the page is the woman slide restorations. The slides are made into sections, and between the sections, you have to caulk and seal that to keep water from, from going through, and then also gel seal coat on the slide itself to protect the fiberglass.
So they're okay for now, then?
They're okay. They're okay for now. That's it.
No, thank you.
I didn't see a windsock.
It's in the works.
All right, so that wrapped up our discussion about the capital projects fund. So if you look at page twelve, you can see the bottom line of the white text in the black box. If we did all of the projects that are scheduled in twenty twenty-six, we'd have a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars left in the C I P sales tax fund at the end of the year. Twenty twenty-seven, one eighty, twenty twenty-eight, six hundred. And you can see how it's building up in twenty thirty because of the plan to transfer the mill levy into the recreation fund. Now that sales tax is freeing up for C I P sales tax. The, the balances of one ninety-two and one eighty in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven make me a little uncomfortable. And if there's an emergency, you know, will we have the funds we need? But, but I think it's doable because we're seeing the improvement. I would be really uncomfortable if it was a hundred thousand dollars every year. But we have a plan and, and I'm comfortable with the plan if y'all are comfortable with the, with the idea of the concept that I presented earlier. Uh huh, and so the next fund is the street capital projects fund and Brian will come back up for this.
How's, how's everybody doing? Are you guys? Need a potty break?
Yeah.
Five minutes, is that?
Yeah, we got quite a bit.
Yeah, but Brian talks fast. But I think, I think the rest of it is Brian.
Brian is one of my favorites.
I feel like you need a windsock out of, of this maniac's cabin. It's like thirty-nine dollars for a windsock.
I didn't see it, so I had to ask.
How do you guys run out of drugs?
Well, yeah, that's fine.
You guys don't have anything else to present?
Should I go grab a, 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 your toilet stash and you can call it here? It will walk you through, yeah.
Preaching to the choir.
Nothing I've ever met. He loves talking about finance.
So now shade.
He just.
John Givell?
Yeah.
Yeah, Zach, let's get going on that grant. Let me go, some delivery service. He can deal with the trouble.
Use the.
Roll the delivery packs.
There you go. I like that. I mean, I'm assuming, not you guys, but if I'm out there, I can probably call up the. You mean the name? Yeah, yeah. Call them and they bring out.
And then, yeah, and deliver.
No, I mean, you know, like eighty-seven dollars. I don't know what you guys have available. I don't know what you got in that, in your concessions in there, but you know. All right, when they, yeah, go to Pizza Hut, get in, no, go to Domino's, give me one of the new stuff, fuck pizza.
I can share the story with you now, sir, but an officer got themselves in trouble for having DoorDash delivered to a parade lap rally occasion. They were directing traffic and they were hungry, so they had DoorDash come to the parade. One of my former officers, yes.
Well, I, I think what was the tipping point was the folding, the folding chairs you were all with her.
So Roberta, my kids got the, the Settlers of America.
Oh yeah?
Yeah, from my birthday, so. Anyway, that's, I'll look if they were playing that.
Well, I haven't played that third one.
So the same thing as Settlers of Catan?
Yeah, so you gotta hold it out in space and you gotta go across.
Oh yeah, like the West Side expansion and yeah, that sounds like fun. Haven't done that one.
It's pretty good, it's pretty long.
Yeah, well, some of those games are, I like those kind of games.
Yeah, you just grab a coffee and.
Well, I'm not gonna say it's always South and Hall free, but. Sometimes gaming requires, you know, something a little workaholic.
I think, Jimmy, I had to move a cart so you can go ahead.
He won't be a while.
Let's do it.
Next item on here is on our page sixty-seven. This is our annual payment management program. Starting in twenty twenty-five, this year we increased the funding by five percent. We'd been at two million consistent for a number of years. And so in twenty twenty-five, we had two point one million. Each year moving forward to twenty thirty, we show an additional five percent increase per year. You'll notice in twenty twenty-eight, the nine hundred and fifty-three thousand is for a grant matching project pulled out of that. That is actually for Fourth Street. We submitted for a city connecting link improvement program. Project on Fourth from Seneca where we stopped downtown all the way to Metropolitan. And so if we get it, it would be a four hundred thousand dollar grant through K D O S. And then the city would be responsible for the rest. We've actually, we're planning on making that a three lane section until we approach Metropolitan where we'd widen it out for the turn lanes. We're tying it perfectly with a new bridge. New bridge would open in twenty twenty-nine and this would be in twenty twenty-eight. So at that point in time, new bridge, new intersection in Metropolitan and, and new roadway all the way down through downtown. So that's that part. In that project, we do milling overlays, we do surface seals, those types of things.
I don't mean just to, to interrupt you, but I gotta tell you, I am hearing lots of praise for the way the roads are right now. The, I mean, I've got people telling me all the time, oh, it's great, it's the Tenth Avenue. Oh man, I mean, people are just loving what you're doing with the streets out there.
Well, that's what they complain about the most, so they should be.
Yeah, yes. I'm glad they, they voiced the other way too.
Yes, yes, and I do too. I can't, I'm not blaming anybody for complaining because I complain too, so it's like, yeah.
I, I think it's, it's going pretty good. I mean, we've been trying to put about one point five million into milling overlays. Cause that makes a big impact and then about five hundred thousand a year roughly in the surface seal. So trying to keep the good roads good and keep the, the fair roads with the milling overlay, bring them back up to, to good shape. So I think it's going pretty good. Next item we have is annual pavement striping program. This would be actually a new program starting in twenty twenty-six. Funding at twenty-five thousand dollars per year, as you can see in the picture in there.
What, you skipped Wilson Avenue?
We did skip that one. Well, let Scott talk about that one. How about that, Brian?
I'd be happy to talk about that one.
Okay, go for it, Scott.
So we, we are well aware of the, you know, the importance that this project has both to, to all of you and also to Zephyr. And what's the, the other manufacturer? Thank you. The, the, the truth is we should have built this sooner. And I'm, I don't mean to throw anybody else under the bus on this, that's just the truth. The cost for this project is, has risen beyond our ability to afford it. Is putting a hu, well, it is putting a huge burden on our capital improvements program over the next five years with our current revenue streams. We are currently recommending that we hold some of that money in reserve, not recommending that we spend it. But to hold it back for the next few years until either A, the economy gets better or revenue gets better. So that, it basically recommending that it would be the first back in line, if that makes sense, to be rescheduled if we find a better financial situation. And, or until then, keep it on schedule for the time being. We don't think we have the funding, there's about a half a million dollars, six hundred thousand dollar gap there, which is pretty significant to do the project. The, we, I, I, so we did a tour last week with Zephyr. I spoke with the office manager and I explained to her, you know, we are still committed to the road. We're not backing away from it. We just don't have the funding there currently. We have looked into, well, we could just build the road up to that entrance, which would certainly cut the cost of the pro, the road, the project for the road. The problem there you have is whenever you do finally complete the road, you've now doubled the overall cost of the project, tripled maybe. Just because mobilization is such a big, and, and materials are such a big component. When you buy things in bulk, while they're already out there, things are cheaper, which is very reasonable at Havens Park Trail. It's because they're already out there, so it's cheaper for us to do it. So yes, it is a possibility for us to reduce the scope of the project to get out to the entryway to that industrial park. Just know that if we do that, we are exponentially increasing the rest of the, the cost of the rest of the road later. The, I, I also did, you know, I, I passed it just for the record. I passed along my business card to that office manager, said, get your boss in touch with me. I would be happy to have that conversation with them in person and explain what's going on. So certainly want to, I want to make it clear, we are keeping that dialogue open. Penny has had conversations with them about it, so we're not keeping them in the dark.
I know, but when they talked about, before they ever expanded. And one of the things that would keep them here is if we fixed up that street.
And it's really, uh, it's in hazard.
And so I feel like we kind of owe them that.
We absolutely do, nobody is denying that. Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, if you guys say, hey, no, this, this needs to get done, we will try to find a way. I just, just know that that is a significant amount of money that we, that, you know, a lot of.
So, so options would be. We could. We could reduce the money in the payment management program and move three or four hundred thousand dollars to Wilson Avenue. I don't think we want to do that. I know Brian doesn't want to do that, which is why.
That's why he tried to skip this thing.
Oh, yes, yeah.
But, you know, and, and, and when we talked about moving the lights forward, I said, well, maybe we can rearrange things. But this is one of the things we had to think about. We thought we had enough money last year when we allocated of eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the economic development fund. You can see I still have that listed here and we're, we're short even with that because when we allocated that, we thought this was a one point six million dollar project. And then when it got reassessed because of the time that went by, it's a two million dollar project. We don't have another four hundred thousand dollars available in the economic development fund. So things, can things be rearranged and, and get it done sooner than later? Yeah, maybe, but we, we tried to allocate things as we thought the most essential first. If you go back to page twelve, you'll see that in twenty twenty-eight, there is six hundred thousand dollars available in twenty twenty-eight. I know we don't want to waste that long to schedule it, but, but that's when money starts freeing up to be able to do, to do things. Which means we can pull that forward, right? And push something else back to twenty twenty-eight and get them all done within three years. So, so that really is up to the commission to, you know, we can have this discussion of, can we move things around? Use up some of this money that's coming to the bottom line in twenty twenty-eight. Push some things that are in twenty-six out to twenty-seven, some things out in twenty twenty-seven to twenty-eight and pull the, and pull the.
Yeah, you talk about how important our economic development is, I think we should.
Penny also reminds me that one of the factors that for us in making this recommendation was that property to the north?
Yes.
To the east. We are currently targeting for a possible R H I D development and we're talking about that R H I D incentive. If that were to be the case and we were to provide that funding, the developer could help cover some of the costs of that roadway. And the R H I D would help pay them back for those infrastructure costs. So that, that was another reasoning behind that.
Have you, like, I think I feel more comfortable before we switch things and with you talking to the president of Zephyr. And see where they're at. I mean, are they, doesn't it sound like they're knocking on our door every day? But I wasn't on the commission when we made the phone.
Well, they have been very patient, at least like seven years I've been on the commission longer with, with Nancy.
There, there is, yeah, absolutely no question that, that we, we told them we would do it, we owe them that. No question that at the staff level, we remain committed to the project. I definitely don't want to give off any appearance that we were trying to push it away. We, we are, as, as Roberta mentioned, we, we're just trying to prioritize based on the current funding stream. So, you know, and yes, it is, they are an important business to the city and we want to make sure that we keep them happy. We, we definitely understand that.
Maybe try again and check in with him.
Moving on.
Yeah, annual pavement restryting program. Starting in twenty twenty-six, just like I said, it's something we haven't done in the past. Years ago, when we did our pavement management program, we'd include some money for restriping. Lately, we have been just milling and overlaying and, and restriping the roads that we bill and overlay. It's important, if you look at the picture on page sixty-nine, it's kind of hard to see the turn arrows there. It's hard to see stop bars, it's hard to see crosswalks. So we really feel it's important to initially focus around our schools, to do the crosswalks, stop bars, those types of things. And just work our way around the city to make sure the pavement's refreshed.
Makes sense.
On page seventy, we had a study by Olson a couple of years ago, back in twenty twenty-two, to assess our traffic signals. They identified a kind of a, our top priority signals that we need to replace, whether they're obsolete or the poles themselves are failing. If you look at this picture here, this would be at the Hughes and Limit. You can kind of see the rust on the pole. We're losing section of the pole that structurally is going to start to fail on them. So we just have programmed in, working on traffic signals per Olson's recommendation. And so that's what they're programmed in, roughly sixty thousand dollars a year for that. Again, this is a new program. On page seventy-one, it's for the airport. This is our taxiway.
One second for me. We're starting with the projects in the grant matching fund. In twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, we decided that these projects, the deficit would be covered by the surpluses we had in the general fund. So you do see a one million dollar transfer from the general fund in twenty twenty-six. I will say that because of the, the, the decrease in revenue, that hurts a little bit more in twenty twenty-six than we originally planning. And then going forward, twenty twenty-seven and forward, every time we get a project that has a grant with a, with a matching component, we will look at what department or what, what, what kind of project it is and see if there are funds available from that funding source for those grants. So we really like keeping these, these grant projects segregated in this fund so we can keep an eye on them. But we're, we're going to get creative going forward as to where the matching component is coming from. And, and we see that with this nine hundred and fifty-three thousand that Brian pointed out for the Fourth Street project, right? That money's not coming from the general fund, it's coming from a portion of its payment management program.
First project on here would be the airport, taxiway and apron pavement seal. First project on here would be the airport, taxiway and apron pavement seal. We need to, if we're going to maintain the airport, we need to maintain the asphalt out there for the, for the pilots. This would be a application to KDOT for the Airport Improvement Program in 2026. If we were awarded it, it's at eighty-five fifteen, and the only way we would be able to do the project is if we do get that grant. So, the cost for the project is about seventy-seven thousand, fifteen percent of that would be the city's, and the grant managing fund, and eighty-five percent through KDOT.
Be good. I think that the airport's going to be getting a lot more use with the, everything opening up at the fort.
Page seventy-two, this is our ADA Downtown Ramp Program scheduled for 2026. This is actually a one hundred percent funded, it's in the grant fund, but KDOT will fund one hundred percent through the Transportation Alterness Grant, and it's estimated at six hundred and eighty thousand for that program. Page seventy-three, it's for our Tenth and Limit Intersection Program. This is a program that was identified as federal government for safe, basically high-crash intersections. My tenth and limit was identified as a high-crash intersection. KDOT agreed with our analysis and the funding up to one million dollars for this project. Our current cost is estimated at one point three million for construction. And as again, twenty-six, we're looking, we won't make September bid, but we'll get, hopefully, within a couple of months after that, so it'll be constructed in probably spring of 2026. And then the next one on page seventy-four is actually our Vilas Street Project, which has been ongoing for years. This is to put sidewalk on Vilas from Tenth to Fifteenth on the south side. It's also to fix sidewalks on the north side from Tenth to Twentieth, and then from Twentieth to Twenty-second sidewalks, and actually we have sidewalks on both sides, actually curb and gutter on that section from Henry Leavenworth to Twenty-second, curb inlets, and there's actually a rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacon at Henry Leavenworth School, so the kids can safely crossly to the north, cross safely to the north side of the street. We do have all the right of way, we got all the permits, finally through KDOT, and so this is the schedule of October twenty-five bid through KDOT, and then that would be a spring of 2026 construction, and we'd work on the section from Twentieth to Twenty-second during the summer when the school is out.
Okay, so that wraps up the Grant Matching Fund, and now we're into the Sewer Fund. And as a reminder, all the Sewer Fund projects are financed with the Fees for Service. That said, if you go, flip forward to page seventeen, you'll see estimated capital reserves at the beginning of the year for 2026 is five million dollars. That's an unusually large number, and the reason that that number is so large is because when we receive the ARPA funds, we identified about three million dollars for the projects for the Sewer Fund. Those projects have not been completed yet. The ARPA funds were used to pay for operating costs in the Sewer Fund, and then we kept some reserves in the Sewer Fund to pay for these projects in the future. The schedule does spend down that money fairly rapidly.
And before Brian goes through these projects, I, I mentioned in a, one of my manager's reports last couple of weeks, we have, is it Black and Beach?
Black and Beach.
We've got, we have hired Black and Beach, who did the original study for the wastewater treatment facility, and we've asked them to go back out there and look at what a design and cost and scope would be for building a new wastewater treatment facility on the existing property. Just something to, something for you all to keep in mind as we go through this, part of what we have asked them is if we are to build that new facility, what items on this list that we've slated for replacement can we avoid replacing if we're not going to use them in the new system, if that makes sense? So, the, the number one there, as you'll see in 2026, is replace trickling filter number one. The trickling filter system that we use, I won't get us too bogged down into the science of it, but the way we treat our water currently is through trickling filter, which is, you'll learn this about engineers, they name things exactly what they do. So, it trickles as it, so it filters as it trickles. So, that's, apparently that system is no longer considered in compliance, or scientifically, whatever, appropriate. They now recommend nutrient-based system, which uses the natural biome of the, of the waste, sorry, I don't mean to be gross, but to, to basically treat itself. And so, the trickling filters as such, if we move to the new system, would no longer be needed. And so, that report we are expecting here in early fall, which will, obviously, kind of, it'll be a quick turnaround there, where we'll decide whether or not we need to replace these items, but just so you all know here, in the, in the next few months, we will have a report on some of these items, we are hoping will no longer need to be replaced, and we will just make do. But all the more reason when I talk about, we need to make a decision this year on where we're going, this is what we're talking about, because if we decide, hey, we're going to build a new facility, which is absolutely what we're recommending, but we need you all to make that, say, go, then we're going to stop replacing some of these things. And if we stop replacing them, we can't turn around and decide we're going to replace them five, eight years down the road. So, just keep that in mind as we, as we have these conversations. And we don't know exactly what some of these items are yet that we may or may not need.
So, to follow up on that, if we decide not to replace the trickling filter, for example, that two million dollars will go toward, like, a down payment on the new plant, and it'll reduce the amount of money that we have to borrow.
Right.
So, hopefully whoever sold us on the Enterprise program isn't selling us on...
Yeah.
The plant itself!
Different people, yeah, yeah.
So, we drinking dirty water? That's what I took away.
I just wanted, I wasn't here when they bought into the Enterprise, so I just want to make that clear.
That's why I get it in a refrigerator.
Okay, um, okay.
On page seventy-six.
Let's move on.
This is actually an ongoing program that we do every year, it's manhole and sewer line replacements, or rehab, we've been funding it at five hundred thousand per year. It's basically fixing failing lines, rehabilitating manholes that is needed throughout the city. Then on page seventy-seven, as Scott mentioned, these are projects that are planned for the next five years. Black and Beach is doing a, a deep dive into this, the report is supposed to be to us in October of 2025, of what makes sense to do and what doesn't make sense to do. Again, replacing the switchgear makes sense, that's something that we need to do. The trickling filter number one, our guess is that we're going to keep that thing going. And the items that are here are based on our HDR study that we did a couple of years ago, where they came to the assessment of all the equipment in the plant, they weren't looking at a new plant, they were looking, what do you need to do to keep this plant running? And so, these are the items that they identified.
And they said replace everything.
Yeah, pretty much.
Pretty much, that's what I remember. They listed every bolt. That bolt needs to be replaced.
So, in follow-on, there's just a lot of pictures of some of our equipment, you can see nineteen seventy-zero, some of the electronic equipment, you can see a little bit of rust on it.
A little bit?
Yeah, so...
Oh my gosh, look at that.
You're buying parts on eBay to keep it running, because it no longer makes that.
Yeah.
Hey, Jamie.
So, that's, in 2026, fifty thousand to decommission the old admin building for storage. We'd be keeping the, both the belt press and the new screw press, which is in the process of getting finalized upstairs in that building, but the downstairs, our offices are moving the new admin building, which is supposed to be scheduled or completed in the end of July.
Oh, okay.
So, probably have a ribbon cup hanging out there.
Yeah, we all see that.
First of August, lots of food right underneath the trickling filter there.
Some of this equipment that we don't use anymore, but like, we look for eBay, can we sell this to other water treatment plants that are in our same situation?
I don't think...
They don't want them.
Well, can we, like, parts?
The, the, the people that would buy these would scrap them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We're looking, somebody else might be.
They'll take whatever they want to give us for money.
Yeah, that's what, well, that, the point being that anybody that would want to buy this stuff, they would want it for scrap or for parts or whatever, but I don't think any, I don't think any other wastewater operator would, would consider using them as their designed function, is I guess what I'm saying, but...
They're relics.
On page eighty-one, for 2026, it's actually a hundred and twenty-three thousand for lift station pumps, that both the Select and Hallmark Lift Stations. These things are, are getting old, and just ongoing replacement. Page eighty-two is actually backup generators. KDHE actually, regulations want us to have backup generation at each lift station. So, when we lose power, that kicks on to keep the overflows going into our creeks.
Yeah.
Right now, we have one generator on a trailer, and so if we get a call out that we've lost power, we have to come into the office, get the trailer, haul it out there, hook it up, and hopefully, we don't have two lift stations to go down.
Oh, my.
So, this is for, it's over a, a period of twenty-seven, and again, in twenty-nine, it's putting this backup generation each lift station. Page eighty-three is just a new trailer-mounted jetter to exist, replace existing equipment. It'd be replacing a nineteen eighty flat bed truck with mounted pump, so. Eighty-four, this is for repairs to the Hallmark Force Main, the original main was constructed in nineteen seventies. And when we did the intersection of Eisenhower and Forest Street a couple of years ago with City Lansing, we had two breaks in that process underneath the road.
Wow.
So, it's something that, it's kind of a ticking time bomb there.
Yeah.
Page eighty-five is actually replacing our closed-circuit television system and camera truck, scheduled in 2028. We use this all the time, it was currently purchased in 2012, so at that point, it'll be sixteen years old.
Okay.
It's something like, anytime we have a call out for a backup, we take a camera truck out to see if it's in the city main or if it's on the private side, it's, it's used all the time. Eighty-six, page eighty-six is a replacement of our flush truck scheduled for 2029. The unit being replaced was purchased in two thousand and four, and then the line actually goes two thousand and three, miss that session, two thousand and four.
This two thousand was purchased in two thousand and four.
Right, and it's a two thousand and three truck.
Oh!
It's, it's getting up to an age.
Yeah, looks like it.
Well, it's a two thousand and three truck purchased in two thousand and four.
The, and these types of items, whether I have a new plant or not, these things are needed because this is in our collection system.
Okay.
Then in 2029, we actually show the replacement of a current utility vehicle that we have that we purchased in 2023. We have it running along the river, we have two large lines along the river that we can't get our pickups through. The sewer lines typically go in your lowest spots, which are for gravity flow, so colossus creeks, those types of things, those get overgrown, this thing can get in there and we can inspect our lines with these things, so.
It's a cool little thing.
Guys didn't know how much they'd use it until we bought it, and it was confident. Page eighty-nine is a replacement of dump truck in 2030.
What about eighty-eight?
Eighty-eight.
Okay, Miss Ellen, we'll talk about that later.
Manholes, manholes along the river.
Look at that thing.
Yeah. We, we are trying to keep the, we've talked about Eye on Eye in the past, which is inflow and infiltration, where we have either rainwater, groundwater going into our sewer system, anything that goes into our sewer system, we have to treat. And so, we have manholes along the river, things like this that have, as you can see in the picture, anytime the water comes up, we're treating a whole lot of water we shouldn't be treating. And so, we have two hundred thousand in 2029 to work on those. Now, in 2030, showing a dump truck, which is currently a 2020, and so it'd be ten years old, and to get on that ten-year to fourteen-year replacement cycle. This is the one that fits the, on the first floor of the building, and we press the sludge, it goes on a conveyor belt and dumps into the truck, and then we haul it down to the landfill.
You do that every day?
Yeah. And then this look, recoding of raw sewage pump and pipes, this would actually be something that will be evaluated with Black and Beach to see if this system needs to be in place. We show this in 2030, it's protecting that investment, but again, if we're putting a new plant in at some point shortly after that, can we wait? I think the last item on the, see, I'm very sure side of things, is a pickup truck. Again, this is shown in 2030, it's replacing a 2019 Dodge, again, it'll be on eleven years on that. That's the last item on the...
Yeah, there were two, the Refuge Fund, which is on page, well, before we go there, on page seventeen, you can see the, the gold bar with the, with the white letters, there will be one point eight million left in the Sewer Fund, and this is capital reserves in the Sewer Fund and the Refuge Fund. The first thing I do is hold back thirty percent for an operating reserve, and then the balance I'm considering capital reserves, so you can see the amounts that'll be left in the Sewer Fund for capital projects at the end of each year. And then, and then the Refuge Fund starts on page eighteen, and the funding sources fees for service, and, you know, before we even start talking about it, as, as Scott mentioned, we have work we need to do to present some numbers about what happens if we build a waste transfer station, or what happens if we, or do we decide to contract this out? This schedule is pretty much predicated on just keeping things the way they are. So, this is what we would do if we didn't do anything different, but we did it, put together a schedule for any of the other scenarios, because we don't, we're not there yet.
Yeah.
So, that's what this schedule is, is predicated on not changing anything.
And Trevor is putting that information together, and will be presenting that to you here in the next few weeks.
Wait, with the exception of the very first...
He's ready.
With, with the, with the exception of the, the third item that Brian gets to, I'm just going to jump the gun here, the, the first, the, the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in 2026 is for an additional trash truck. So, in the, in the previous rotation, we would replace a truck every other year, and we had six, so this schedule does, as I said, it kept the status quo, well, not quite, it does include adding another trash truck, we should improve service, I hope. Okay, so anyway.
Guys, I shouldn't be getting many calls right now.
Trash, not a one, not a one.
Nope.
Okay, so anyway, now, we're good.
Okay. So, on page ninety-two, is for replacement of our shuttling roll-off chassis, which is gravel and compatible. It currently has, of this, of last year, when it puts us together, had a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it. So, we show the replacement in 2026 for a cost of two hundred and five thousand. And then in 2029, the International Roll Off, again, for another two hundred and five thousand. Page ninety-three. This is actually a, we have a Bobcat Skid Loader, and we actually need a mower for that. And so, our current mower is obsolete, and we've been unable to repair it. And so, while this is under the Refuge Fund, this, we've used this for areas like Santa Fe, if you get a call about the Santa Fe, and they need to know, we're actually working with the county this year, they'll, they'll help us out while we get this programmed in for replacement.
Okay, yeah.
On page ninety-four, as Roberta mentioned, we run six trucks, and we need five up and running. We have four on route each day, Monday through Thursday. We try to keep ones empty at the shop, and so when a truck gets full, they bring that to the shop, get in the one that's empty, and someone hauls the full one down to the landfill, and we keep trying to cycle that way, so we keep our guys in town as long as we can. With six trucks, this is a very hard life on these trucks, it's stop and go every address down the street, and they're running four days a week, ten to twelve hours a day at times, and, and some on Friday. And so, we're asking for a seventh truck, just so we can keep, keep five running hopefully at all times. Again, if we change the system, that may not be needed.
To be determined.
All right, that's the end of the Refuge Fund. And then finally, we've got the Stormwater Capital Projects Fund, which the revenue source is the Stormwater Impact Fee.
And so just a list of projects that we got here from 26 to 20, 2030. In 2026, we show miscellaneous bridge repairs. If you drive Fifth Street there over Three Mile, you know the bridge deck's in really poor shape. This fund would be used to replace that bridge deck. Also, 550,000 in orange fence projects. Those are little projects we do around town, Ninth and Osage, Twentieth and Seneca. We just reopened both of those projects. We'll be bringing to the commission in next week, Sixth Avenue and Spruce. There's small projects in town that have stormwater issues. Bob Doherty Park, as you all know, that one that the truck fell through the parking lot, we got that scheduled for 2026. I actually show the Fifth Street Bridge Deck Repair over Three Mile, 150,000. Fourth Street Stone Arch Replacement, Fourth Street Stone Arch Replacement for 750,000. That's actually under the section of road that we just did on Fourth Street. We're not going to be actually physically replacing that, we're going to be rehabilitating that stone arch by using spun cast cement liner on the inside. That arch is failing, that was some of the cost that we, project went to almost eight million dollars back when we rejected the bids on Fourth Street because of the cost of removing and replacing this arch and the depth that it was. We have a process that we can go, basically, we have that entire arch from Seneca down to Three Mile Creek. We've got that programmed in in 2027, and again, continuing with our orange fence projects through 2030.
So this is the easiest fund to budget. I told Brian how much money we have, and he spent it.
Yeah.
But we know exactly how much money we're going to get every year, and yes, we could use more than than we get. But, you know, the challenge is, we identify projects that need to be done, and then there's an emergency, so we take the money from the the scheduled project to do the emergency, but but we are knocking some of them out.
The first city we had stone arches, the stone arches were built in late 1800s, those are failing. We went through and did corrugated metal pipe called CMP, and those are all rusting out.
Yeah.
And so, you know, each year those get over, so those those projects popping up.
Okay, so that is the end of the book. Are there any questions that you would like to ask before you go home and contemplate this fascinating information?
Look at it, think about it.
Okay.
Great job.
Bringing it down right now.
We will be discussing this, obviously, with you guys as a group, but, you know, obviously, if you have individual questions, please do not hesitate to reach out, we would be happy to answer them.
Before we leave, can I have a separate question? Does the city do a wreath at the Levinworth National Cemetery? I somehow feel like, Griff, I saw you do one last year.
They did, they did.
We do it every year.
Yeah, no, I know what you're talking about, Holly, because there was a miscommunication, I think, last year, I think we had.
I feel like, were you there? Did you walk it?
Yeah, I was up there, but I don't think I walked it, though. I don't think we did last year.
Yeah, I don't think we did either, I don't think there's a wreath.
Yeah, I remember saying that, now I actually forgot about that.
You, you and I were both there, and you wa, and I thought you walked it.
No, I think I did.
Or did I walk it?
I don't know.
I wanted to.
You came in.
I don't know, I want to make sure we have one, because.
Yeah, are you going up?
Well, it says RCP by May 16th, which is past, but.
But normally.
We have to let them know, because I think.
Do we have to buy the wreath ourselves? Or they provide it for us?
The city would normally provide it.
But Scott doesn't know, I mean, this is his first year.
Somebody else may know.
I would usually hear about it after the fact, but I'm not sure really who would buy it.
I know, we had.
Yeah, they actually, they're like, well, let you guys know.
Perhaps, maybe you and I could, especially this isn't an agenda item, maybe we could work on it tomorrow, just try to figure out, find some information out, so.
Good call.
Just asking, because I don't want to get out there and be like.
Yeah, yeah, the city usually takes a wreath up.
Okay, anything else that, anything else? So do we need a motion to adjourn, can I just adjourn?
Nope, just adjourn.
Just adjourn.
All right, have a great week.